All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. Welcome to the City Council, Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority meeting. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Muntoya?
Here.
Sorry. Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Present.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Mayor Heikle?
I am here. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, is Earth Day, and March 22nd through May 18th, 2025, is Green Norman Eccubration in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation?
Motion.
Second.
Have motion and second. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge or receive the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. There you go.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A pro- excuse me. A pro- in Oklahoma proclaiming Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day, and March 22nd through May 18th, 2025, as Green Norman Eccubration in the city of Norman. Whereas Senator Gaylord Nelson created Earth Day to increase environmental awareness and to highlight devast- the devastating effects of pollution in our air, water, and soil to the nation. And whereas 22 million Americans celebrated the first Earth Day in April 22nd, 1970. Whereas the city of Norman Parks and Recreation, Utilities, and Public Works Departments have planned a series of events to celebrate this important milestone and provide Norman residents with an opportunity to get involved. And whereas Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, marks the 55th anniversary of Earth Day. And whereas March 22nd through May 18th is recognized as the Green Norman Eccubration with free activities to be held at various locations across the city. And whereas the 22nd Annual Earth Day Festival will be held in Andrews Park on Sunday, April 27th, 2025, from noon to 5:00 PM. And whereas we encourage the community to come to be a part of these free public events and learn the new things about the world around us. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, as Earth Day, and March 22nd through May 18th, 2025, as Green Norman Eccubration at the city of Norman, and encourage our citizens to make a difference in our community, to think, reduce, reuse, recycle, replenish, restore, refresh, replant, rebuild, repurpose, and respect. I'd like to recognize Michelle Loudenbach. There she is, our wonderful.
I'm very excited. Are you surprised?
Esteemed mayor and council, thank you so much for this proclamation and for your commitment, really, to making Norman a leader in environmental stewardship. I'm very honored to be here to accept this proclamation as we prepare for Green Norman Eccubration. It's a season of community engagement, hands-on learning, and a time to make action that's impactful, that encourages us to protect the resources that makes our city such a great place to live. Most of you know this year has been deeply personal to me, and it's reminded me of the importance of time and community and the world around us. Nature really has the ability to ground us, and it offers renewal and resilience even in the hardest of times. So with that, and as we step into the season, I invite everyone to take a moment to really appreciate the beauty and strength of our environment, but not only that, also our roles in sustaining that environment. We begin this journey with a great weekend, a kickoff weekend for Green Norman Eccubration, and we're focusing on one of the most important resources. We can all agree, it's water. Yes! And we mark World Water Day on March 22nd with a tour at the Vernon Campbell Water Treatment Plant. Here, folks will get to explore how their water is treated, and they'll also learn about landscaping practices that they can use at home that protect water quality and bring a plant home. What? Talk about that. And then on the 23rd, we're going to roll up our sleeves for a Bishop Creek Watershed Cleanup Event. And here, at this event, folks will get to pick up litter and help us make it better, but guess what else? They also get to help us install a litter boom in the creek. A litter boom. This is a simple but powerful tool that will help us prevent that litter from heading on downstream to the Canadian River and then on to Yuffala, Lake Yuffala. Wow. And we continue through this celebration with more activities to bring people together in creative and impactful ways. Did you know, this is really cool, on April 10th and 11th, the 7th Annual Artful Inlets Installation is occurring on Campus Corner this year. Campus Corner. And the theme this year is Clean Stream Champions. How cool. On May 3rd, we're tackling another growing challenge with the Spring Electronics Waste Collection Event. That's also at Reeves Park. Bring us your stuff, anything with a cord. And then, of course, we'll bring it all together on April 27th. Did I mention that's my birthday? Let me say that again. It's my birthday! So not only will we be celebrating our community at the 25th Annual Earth Day Festival, we'll be celebrating me. So come out. It's a great community celebration that features food trucks, vendors, beverages, and also live music from bands just like our very own Anthony Francisco and the City Hall Band. That's right. Events like these, though, really bring home that caring for the environment is not just about what we protect, it's about what we create. We create a stronger community, a healthier future. We create a city that values both progress and preservation. That's cool. So today, I invite all of our residents to take part in Green Norman Eccubration this year. Find an event that speaks to you. Bring your family and friends, and may take meaningful action that really makes a difference in your community. All the events and registration information can be found on greennorman.org. That's right, check it out. And again, thank you, mayor and council, for your leadership, and to everyone who keeps showing up, taking action, and making Norman a place that we're proud to call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Item number two, a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming March 18th, 2025, as Public Transit Professional Appreciation Day in the city of Norman. I'd like to entertain a motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation?
Motion.
Have motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge or receive the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. You gotta go through. It didn't reset.
Okay. It's not clearing here.
Yay. Now you make-
My apologies.
Machines. We'll bring them down to Michelle. Do you want to tell us the vote count?
Yes. The motion on the floor is to acknowledge or receive the proclamation. All votes have been cast and the motion to- proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming March 18th, 2025, as Public Transit Professional Appreciation Day in the city of Norman. Whereas public transit benefits everyone in the city of Norman by reducing traffic and parking congestion, improving air quality, and playing an integral role in the economic development and making of our city more accessible to all by getting people where they need to go, medical appointments, school, work, and other essential services. And whereas the duty of the transit vehicle operator is to safely maneuver transit vehicles through unpredictable traffic in tough weather conditions while exercising caution and following the laws of the road to maximize the safety of their passengers and serving is outstanding examples of safety, courtesy, discipline, and effective communication as they perform their duties each day. Whereas the city of Norman Fleet Transit Maintenance Staff provide expertise in the preventive maintenance and upkeep of fleet buses, vans, and shuttles for the safety of our customers, visitors, and the community. And whereas City of Norman Embark and Via Norman On-Demand Administrative and Support Staff provide excellence in customer service and dispatch while working diligently on improvements to the transit system. And whereas the City of Norman Public Transit Services travel in excess of 530,000 miles and facilitate more than 429,000 passenger trips annually in Norman. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, as Public Transit Professional Appreciation Day in the city of Norman, and invite members of the public to share their appreciation for these professionals as they make use of public transit services. Like to recognize Mr. Taylor Johnson, our Parking and Transit Program Manager.
Could those staff members that are coming up later, will they go ahead and come up and take a picture with the mayor real quick? Embark and Via.
Thank you, mayor and council, for the proclamation and recognizing our essential employees that are here tonight. You all get to see me regularly at our CPNT meetings, and I get to boast about how amazing our transit system is doing, the progress we've made the last five to six years that we've had the service as a city operation. But really, it's these employees behind me and those groups that they represent that should get all the praise. They should be the ones we thank day in, day out for all the things the proclamation said that I don't need to re-say because it said it perfectly. And those numbers, by the way, as we've discussed at CPNT for ridership, continue to grow. We're on pace to be a little less than 500,000 this year, up from that 429,000. So we're excited about where transit's going to go in Norman and just the support that you guys have given over the last five or six years. So with that, I want to recognize those employees that are behind me. So we have Lorenda Wells, who's a bus operator with Embark. And we have about 30 bus operators that serve Norman through our Embark contract. And then Eddie Trimble, who's a route supervisor with Embark, overseeing the day-to-day operations with three other route supervisors here down in Norman. We have, representing our nightly fueling and washing, which you probably don't think about a lot, but we have employees that are dedicated to doing that. It's a whole operation itself. We have Scott Nichols here, who also works for Embark. And then representing Via or Norman On-Demand, we have Antonees Jamerson, who, Via is obviously a new addition to our transit services that we've been monitoring and reporting to council at CPNT. And then I don't want to miss our fleet team at the city of Norman. We were going to have a mechanic here, but unfortunately had a scheduling conflict at the last minute. So if you could please help me recognize our mechanics that keep our buses on the road every day. And with that, I just want to echo the proclamation. As you interact with these employees, please express your gratitude. I don't know about you, but I can barely drive down the road, just focusing myself on, you know, with my car, with everybody else around me. But these bus operators, they have a hard job. Customer service, making sure their bus is safe, trying to stop at a safe location, all these things. And then, obviously, our other employees, like Via, they have the same thing, and our nightly fuelers and washers, they have a critical job to keep our buses on the road, and as well as a mechanic. So thank you again for our proclamation, and I look forward to seeing what transit does in the future and how we can continue to make it grow. So, thank you.
Item number three, a proclamation of the mayor proclaiming the month of March, 2025, as Women's History Month in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation?
Second.
Have motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge or receive the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge or receive the proclamation passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming the month of March, 2025, as Women's History Month in the city of Norman. Whereas we proudly recognize that women, nationalities, and cultures have always played a critical role in history and have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas the 2025 theme of Women's History Month is moving forward together. And whereas the 20th century made way for the recognition of women's achievements in March night- women's achievements in March of 1980, President Jimmy Carter signed the first presidential proclamation celebrating Women's History Week. And whereas we acknowledge the contributions of brave women who continued to lobby for equity and made way for the 1987 Joint Resolution of the United States Congress declaring the entire month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas in Norman, we are proud of the rich value for diversity and gender equity through local organizations such as Women in Action for All, Latinas Win Women in Norman, University of Oklahoma Women's and Gender Studies, and the Women's Resource Center, among others. And whereas we honor and recognize all women who contribute daily, day-to-day, to enrich our community through their works in arts, sports, science, politics, and education professionals, frontline workers, caretakers, mothers, and aunts and grandmothers, as women who greatly contribute to the healing and hope of our homes and the country. Now therefore I, Mayor of the city of Norman, do hereby proclaim the month of March, 2025, as Women's History Month in the city of Norman, and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating women and the history of their contributions. I'd like to recognize Ms. Polly Henderson, Norman High School, Girls' Basketball Booster Club president. Do you accept another motion?
Unfortunately, Shante and Michael Perry can't be here because of college obligations that they have in school. They're now seniors in college when this incident took place back in March, 2021. But saying that is, we are so grateful for the support that we receive from the Norman community that made a difference to the young ladies because y'all stood behind them. So thank you again for your support. I continue to look for all the wonderful things that the Norman community going to offer. So thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start with Ward Eight.
All right. To piggyback on that with the proclamation for, you know, Women's Month, went to the Norman High Girls' Basketball Game this morning at the big house, the Oklahoma City Arena that they're about to tear down. I'm not saying I had anything to do with their victory, but when I got there, they were down about 14 points. They battled back, they were playing Tulsa Union, got ahead in the fourth quarter, it was back and forth. Haylen Browning went off, I think she had just south of 30 points. 14 seconds to go, they're down two points. Keely Parks nails a three-pointer with about 2.5 seconds left and sealed the game, so the Norman High ladies are moving on in the state tournament. So super happy about that. It was awesome. And that is my announcement for Ward Eight.
Thank you, sports snapper. Councilmember?
Thank you, and thanks to everybody here tonight and watching at home. Just a couple things. I do want to, on a Norman High note, want to thank Principal Hallie Wright for inviting me to the Norman High Job Fair last week. That was really encouraging, that the city of Norman had a table there, and Main Street Tattoos had a table there, and there were, there was a very wide variety of different booths and career opportunities for high school students to consider right now. And so I really appreciate everybody that was involved in that, and I hope to see more of it. And again, appreciate Principal Wright for inviting me to attend that. Also want to just briefly give an update on the Jenkins Avenue Project, which started last week in Ward Seven. It is a voter-approved enhancement widening project that was approved in 2019 by Norman voters. It is about a $15.5 million project, but a little over $10 million of that is being covered by federal funding. And so the project is anticipated to last potentially up to two years, but the existing roadway is two lanes, one lane each direction, and from what I understand from staff, two lanes will remain open at all times, so there shouldn't be much or little disruption to how you may currently use Jenkins if you do, like Evan and I do, since we live over there. So, but it should be a really nice project when it's finished, and will help traffic flow much better in and out of the campus area and Reeves Park when we have big events, and at the new softball stadium at Lloyd Noble Center, and all the other venues that we have in that south part of Norman. So that'll be ongoing again for the next couple of years, so just prepare yourself for that and plan ahead if you do use that route, but there shouldn't be too much disruption if you're currently using it. So that's ongoing, and the last thing really was just, and Councilman Grant may comment about it too, but it's just the Art Walk is this Friday as well. So encourage everybody to get out to Main Street and check out all the wonderful events and venues and booths and everything that everybody has set up. Thank you.
Councilmember?
No announcements.
Councilmember?
No announcements this week.
Councilmember?
Yes. Good evening, Ward Four, city of Norman. Some may remember that in November, 2024, Norman residents received a letter from the city of Norman Utilities Authority cautioning that properties might be served by a service line of unknown quality and issues related to the lines. The city of Norman is partnering with the Neighborhood Alliance of Central Oklahoma for an informational meeting with our utilities director, Chris Mattingly. This meeting will be at 6:00 PM on Thursday, March 13th, via Zoom. For more information, please contact mary@nacok.org. Regarding Art Walk this Friday, March 14th, from 6:00 to 9:00, I would like to highlight one show at Uncanny Art House, 106 East Main, which hosts the opening of Indian Time, a thought-provoking exhibition created by Alicia Smith, a recently selected Tulsa Fellowship artist in collaboration with the Jacobson House. This exhibition debuts during Art Walk and will be on display through April 6. And I'd also just like to highlight She's Homegrown Talent that showed in New York's city galleries. She has been at Art Basel in Miami. I really think that would be an amazing show for people who are coming out to Art Walk to see some things they might not expect to see. And then last, I would like to highlight the one event. This year's theme is One Spring Night, which takes place on Saturday, March 29th, at Main Site Contemporary Art. Early tickets were $75 back up until February 28th, but they're now up to $100, March 1st through March 21st, and then prices go- And then prices go up to 125 the week of the event beginning Sunday, March 23, all the way to Saturday, March 29. So if you haven't purchased your tickets, get them while they're 100 bucks. Otherwise, you're looking at 125. Or maybe you have a connection with NAC and you can get some tickets. Thank you.
Council member?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Ward Three in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. Just one announcement, it's that time of year where everybody gets to put their wares and their belongings on the corner, you know? So if your Polycart service or your trash day is Monday, your residential spring cleanup is March 29. And if your trash day is Tuesday, then your residential spring cleanup day is April 5. So get ready. Anyway, for all of you here with us and watching online, thank you for being here.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody that we're a little over a month away from the Norman Music Festival. It'll be occurring in the last weekend of April. And for those that don't know, it's Norman's premier event out of, outside of OU football. So please do what you can to attend this event, support this event. It's a free festival, believe it or not. It's not in charge a single thing to attend this festival. And it's only made possible through donations and community support. So please get out there and keep this cherished Norman event cherished in Norman.
Council member?
No announcements.
Mayor has none. Next item on the agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged in one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that item four through item 14 be placed on the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion to place items four through 14 on the consent docket.
Motion.
Have motion and second, plenty of them. The motion on the floor is to place the items, items four through 14 on the consent docket. Council members? Councilmember Dixon, did you push a button? You did. Councilmember Holman? I believe it.
It's not going.
It's just not, it's electronics. Hey, we got one.
Not me, this one.
All votes have been cast and the motion to place items four through 14 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve items four through 14 on the consent docket.
Motion.
And motion and second. Any comments from council regarding any item on this docket? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve items four through 14 on the consent docket. Council members?
It's ready for you. It's ready.
Councilmember? No, it's still got votes?
No, I know, but you, they've already voted.
Oh. Okay, gotcha.
You gotta push one of those.
I try to get ahead. All votes have been cast and the motion to approve items four through 14 on the consent docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Due to open meeting regulations, council is not able to participate in discussion during miscellaneous comments. Remarks should be directed to council as a whole and limited to three minutes or less. And clerk, do we have anybody signed up for comment?
Yes, Mayor. Our first speaker is Gertrude Gonzalez. Trey Kirby. I don't see Trey. Steven Ellis. Jared Miller. Come on up here.
Hi, I'm Jared Miller. I grew up in Norman, lived here my whole life. Grew up on Rock Creek Road on the east side and where Rock Creek, the creek goes under Rock Creek. I was the one that found all the dead fish from your water treatment center on Robinson. I was the one that first found all the dead fish. It was, this, you guys made it look like it wasn't a big deal. There were thousands, tens of thousands of fish dead in that creek. And you guys just brushed it under the rug. DEQ didn't do anything about it. And it was pretty upsetting. You flushed a lot of chlorine down Rock Creek and killed, not some, but all, all life in the creek was dead. Six miles of Rock Creek gone and then into Little River and into Thunderbird. It won't hurt people or cows or anything because it's just drinking water, but all the fish in the creek are dead and gone. And now you want to do a new water treatment plant on Tecumseh. And it's upstream from a pond I bought a couple of weeks ago. And it's, your discharge is going to go straight into my pond now and kill all of my fish in my pond. So not real happy about it. I, I don't know what you can do about it to not put chlorine in your discharge anymore, but it's, it's pretty bad.
Ben Plummer?
I know, I know. It's okay. He was after time.
I guess just to echo what the last guy said, you guys use chloramine instead of chlorine in the water. Chloramine is made by taking chlorine and adding something to it that binds to the chlorine. That stuff, you can't, if you're a gardener, you can't evaporate it. Like with regular chlorine, you can take a barrel of it, put it outside, and in about 24 hours, most of the chlorine will be out of it. You can't do that with chloramine. It takes a month. So you wind up having to install these like elaborate rain capture systems for your garden. If you use chloramated water continuously on your plants, you can use it like half the time, but if you use it all the time, it'll just kill them. So it's actually a big problem for all the gardeners in, you know, in the state. I think Trey Kirby mentioned that you couldn't use city water for agriculture. So like all the farmers, all the gardeners, we already, we already know about this. Like you can't use it 100% of the time. You can only, like 30%, you know, 50% depending on what you're growing. So anyway.
Good evening. My name is Baxter, founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks, 501(c)(3). Our motto is real, not woke. I'm a student at OU, still hanging on to them good grades. Joke time. So I got this from one of you. You guys figure out who that is. Did you hear about the two antennas that got married? The ceremony was a disaster, but the reception was great. We got a couple, we got a couple laughs on that one. All right. Still ain't get Michael. All right, we're gonna get there, we're gonna get there, Michael. Okay, so. We're hosting a large community collaboration, May 3, the Norman Cultural Unity Parade, right? So public safety is something that people of every culture know they need. So this is something we should all agree upon, but we don't. In order to do so, we must rebuild trust in our law enforcement and dispel false narratives by coming together in unity and support. Your presence is requested. We're hosting a healing exchange and commitment campaign paired with the parade. You don't have to be rich to make a difference. We want everyone to be able to contribute. We're only asking you donate $5 and share it with five people, this unity message. I want to give special thanks for support to Big H, Mayor Larry Heikala, Deputy Chief Ricky Jackson, Norman super citizen Aisha Ali, State Representative Kevin West, and State Representative Jacob Rosecrantz. Met with him yesterday. And I'm going to be meeting with State Rep. Jared Deck tomorrow, so I'm going to thank him in advance. I got the QR code so we can donate $5. Support, support, support. U-N-I-T-Y. High five somebody and donate. Thank you.
Kelly Wilson, Ward Six. Just wanted to, most of you probably already know this, but the Turnpike Authority announced at their meeting last week that they will be restarting work on the South Extension, which is the segment that goes on the east side of town. They said there, the, since the Bureau of Reclamation denied the current route as they have it planned at the moment, they will be going back to the drawing board and trying to select a new route. I just wanted to encourage each of you, council members, to please submit a personal request to staff to CCU on all communications that they receive from the design team. That way you guys can stay in the know and stay in the discussion. And I would also encourage you, well, so the Turnpike Authority said that they were going to start holding some meetings for the public, but I would encourage council and the city staff to please consider holding your own meetings so that the citizens can stay in contact with you and you guys can continue to receive feedback from us because we know from the past, the Turnpike Authority's meetings don't really allow for a lot of give and take. It's mostly just them hearing what we say, but not really incorporating it because our comments just kind of go into a black hole. We never see them again. So anyway, so I would just like to encourage you guys to consider something like that, like hold some meetings for the public so that you can relay the information that they're giving to you. And we can relay the information, you know, and our, our feedback and, and our thoughts and, and concerns as well, so that we can stay part of that discussion. Anyway, just wanted to let you guys know all that, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Evan Dunn?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I do have a announcement, but before I talk about that, I'd really just like to preface my comments in that I might speak in generalities about us or you or society, but no, know that I am not an absolutist. I acknowledge that there are always exceptions and not all of these comments are directed at you personally necessarily. The Farmer's Market will be happening again this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There will not, I will not be selling the thrones there, nor will I be teaching a class, although I am working on a class. Couple of weeks ago, we talked about, you know, those invisibles, the atmosphere, the force of gravity, the electromagnetic fields. Well, I, I always have the intention of speaking about a lot of things, more than I can get into three minutes. But what we put in our bodies, what we digest, those atoms, those molecules, have you all been reading this? Very quick, concise descriptions that dispel the mystery of how the world works. For gardeners out there, it's ironic that we're talking about chlorinated water. This filter will get rid of a lot of that chlorine. Put it on the end of your hose. Water your fruit trees, water your garden. You want to remove that chlorine? We know it's there. Obviously, it's in excessive amounts in different parts of our city. That's something that we need to address. We cannot sweep that under the rug, nor can we sweep under the rug the future generations whose legacies we're squandering. Right outside these chambers, there is soil that's exposed. It's, it's not like the Dust Bowl, but it would be if we left all of that soil uncovered. You know, pay me a dollar, pay me a dollar, and I will synthesize all of these mysteries. I will make them so clear and so concise that people can't deny them. You know, I want to say, get out of my way, get on my shoulders. I can't carry you forever, but I want you to see even more. I want you to appreciate the power of taking control of your diet, determining what chemicals, what atoms do you put in your body? How do you integrate the power of oxygen? That's the source of cellular metabolism. Don't we want to be as resilient as possible? Don't we want to be as happy and as creative and as empowered as possible?
Far above my head, I can't comprehend it. Well, I'd like to thank the mayor for his job well done, and I would also like to thank the police chief, even though he doesn't want to run again. So I'm here to tell you that I, I raised my kids and my grandkids and now my great-grandkids at Chuck E. Cheese, and I should have bought one of those places. And my pronouns is pawpaw, that I will, I will live that forever. And now, pretty soon, when you guys see me, you say, there's the guy that got the police called on him at Chuck E. Cheese over a two-year-old not wearing sticky socks. That's got to be out there. And I thought, I'll just call the police again, and I dialed 911, and they said, do you want to see a police officer? And I said, well, yes. So after six or eight months of being robbed, one of them showed up and took a report. And I usually have to just talk to the police chief to get something done, but I'm, I'm amazed. So I appreciate him, I appreciate the mayor, and I'm sorry that the rest of you guys have to listen to these complaints. Thanks a lot.
No more speakers, Mayor.
Council?